Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the Pride of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you could do the roll call when you can.
Councilwoman Nellie Garthwaite is absent. Councilwoman Brian Lox.
Brian Lox, Council Large President.
Councilwoman Anne Heffernan.
Councilwoman Anne Heffernan, First District here.
Councilwoman Ruby Melton.
Councilwoman Ruby Melton, Second District, present.
Councilwoman Sarah Akbarali.
Councilwoman Sarah Akbarali, Third District, present.
Councilwoman Gary Donovan.
Councilman Gary Donovan, Fourth District, present.
Councilman Edward McMillan.
Good evening, Councilman Edward McMillan, Fifth District, present.
Councilwoman Dawn Callahan.
Councilwoman Dawn Callahan, Sixth District, present.
Councilwoman Catherine Tucker.
Councilwoman Catherine Tucker, Seventh District, present.
Councilman Christopher Vargo.
Councilman Christopher Vargo, Eighth District, present.
Councilwoman Katie Muller.
Councilwoman Katie Muller, Ninth District, present.
Councilman Stephen Johnstone.
Councilman Stephen Johnstone, Tenth District, present.
And Chairman Nicholas Pascal.
Chairman Nicholas Pascal, present.
And we have a quorum, Mr. Chairman.
We have a quorum, thank you very much.
And we do have Councilwoman Garthwaite, present.
We will now enter into public session. The time is now seven oh one. Would anyone like to speak before the City Council? For the second time, would anyone like to speak before the City Council? Oh, absolutely. And just name an address for the record.
Okay, great. My name is Eldren Smith. I'm at sixty-two Tree Street, where we've had a new owner that has came in, increased our rent by three hundred dollars, and that is forcing people out, especially our seniors, and only given us a thirty-day notice to move out. We've had our elevator that's been out for more than five months. We have people that is handicapped on the fifth floor, that have small kids, that have special needs, and they're not trying to do anything. We've had issues in our buildings. In my apartment, they've done no increases, no, I mean, no improvements to the things in my apartment. I got cabinets that are falling off the walls. It wasn't until last week Tuesday, when I called the Health Department, that they even sent out a exterminator to take care of the bees and wasps that were inside my apartment. I'm in District Five. I'm hoping that we can get some type of people to get out there, to check it, and see what's been going on. Here, I was at the Fair Rent Commission, and they gave a vote on a ruling in my favor stating that they could not raise the rent. And they put it back to what it was originally of one thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars. But yet, they're taking me to court on that, on their ruling, saying that they don't have the right to do that, and having me to appear in court again. This is something that's going on in our building here that's affecting each and every one of us seniors that is in the apartment, in the building. They have put out so many of us that now they have signs up in the building where they're offering people fifty-dollar Amazon cards if you have a family member or someone that's looking for an apartment, and if they move in, they will give them a fifty-dollar Amazon card. But yet, those of us who are paying them in a consistency, on a regular basis, we are tenants that do not owe them any money. We're not late. We pay them on time, and yet, they're still forcing us out. And I'm saying, how can this be legal? They're having people come in there, blow out apartments, even on Sundays. They redoing over apartments, turning them over, and having new people move in. But yet, they're still pushing us seniors out. And they're pushing us out in a, in a, in a very bad way, that where if they're telling you, you gotta be out in thirty days, as one of my federal, I mean, also tenants that's here, my fellow tenant that's here, they gave her thirty days, said she gotta be out by November first, which is totally ridiculous. Didn't give her even time to look for a place. And the excuse they gave her, well, they want her out so they can turn the apartment over and do some improvements on it. So they're going to evict her for that. Not that she owes them no money, not that she's been behind or late or inconsistent. We are people that have paid in a consistency. We're seniors. How are they gonna increase our rent by come January? We only get a fifty-dollar, a fifty-six-dollar increase on our Social Security. So how can we go along and continue to let this happen to us? We got seniors now that are living in shelters. We got tenants now that have to put their stuff in storage and see if they can move in with a friend because they're pushing them out, and they're pushing us out in a consistency. But I'm wondering, can I bring this light to all of your attention? Can you all start paying attention to what's happening here at sixty-two Tree Street and let us have your help and assistance so these things are not continued to go on? We have mice in our apartments. Beside me having bees, the tenant that lives below me, Ms. Sondras, she had them in her apartment. The tenant above me in three fourteen, he had them in his apartment. And like I said, it wasn't until I called the Health Department, they was willing to do anything. But we still have mice in the building. So I'm hoping that me coming in this evening and meeting all of you all, because I want to be able to attend these meetings, so that I want you all to know what's going on, what's happening to us people that's in these here buildings, that live here in West Haven. We pay taxes here. Aren't we entitled to have the right things to be treated fairly? And that's all we're asking. I mean, if you're gonna raise the rent, I could see fifty, seventy-five dollars, but a three-hundred-dollar increase? We don't get that three-hundred dollars out from our Social Security. You know, and whatever you all can do, please, if you have any consideration for all of us seniors, please step up now. I am sixty-nine. My name is Eldren Smith, and I'm hoping that you all can do something to help and assist us so I won't be the next person being thrown out in the street on the next thirty-day time. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. We'll be looking into this. Would anyone else like to speak before the City Council? Sure. Name an address as well.
My name is Sandra Hind. My address is sixty-two Tree Street, Apartment One Fourteen. I live just below Mr. Smith. I just wanted to emphasize that when we're talking about a three-hundred and plus increase, it's to a one-bedroom apartment. It may sound like it's justifiable, but that's only a one-bedroom apartment we're talking about. So I think it's grossly unfair. I see less and less regard to the senior citizens who live there. I don't know if it's a law that they shouldn't go beyond ten percent increase. I would like to have some clarification about that. But we're talking about a thirty-something percent increase to our rent to senior citizens. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak before the City Council? For the second time, would anyone like to speak before the City Council?
Hi, my name is Laura Doucette. I live over on sixty-two Tree Street. I got a letter in the mail, a certified letter, saying that they wanted to inform me that my lease is not gonna be renewed, that I need to vacate the premises by November first. If not, legal actions will be taken. They wanted to increase my rent from what I'm paying now, one thousand sixty-five, to fourteen hundred. When I told them that I could barely afford what I'm paying now, they turned around and they had asked me, how am I affording it if I can't do it? And I was suggested to get a second job to help pay for the rent that they're asking for. After all this, this is when I got that registered letter, telling me that I needed to be out. They're also, what they're doing is, if you're paying your rent by check, they additionally want an additional twenty-five dollars for the check that you're sending for the rent, or to create a portal on a computer where you can pay them online for five dollars. I'm in the process of moving. Okay, I'm getting my stuff out. I asked for extended time. However, I'm being charged the days that I'm there, the extra days, thirty-five fifty per day. I had asked for help with a flat dolly to move my stuff out. He was gonna charge me. It was only from the apartment to the truck. He's being very unreasonable. And I wanna, I said to him, I wanna say to the property manager, can I make my rent into payment to equal what I owe? No hesitation. He came back and said, no. I wasn't refusing to pay it. I just don't have it. I get paid bi-weekly, and the first, the first two weeks is not even close. And I had to turn around and I had to borrow money for the past three months because he wants to raise it. I really don't want to leave where I am. I like it where I am. And as Mr. Smith had said, we do. We have rodent problems. Okay, and not to get nasty or anything, but we had, I caught twenty-five, twenty-five on my own. And I brought it to their attention and nothing was done. Apartment number one twelve, on the first floor. Hopefully, something could be done about this. He's just doing things rationally, and it shouldn't be done this way. He's just over, he's overbearing. Like I said, just, just to turn around, he had asked me how I was getting the money. Personally, here and now, I shouldn't say this, but it's none of his business. I was paying the rent on time. And as far as the twenty-five dollar for a check, because you're sending it by check, and you're not doing it through the portal for five dollars that they get? They're nickel and dime everything. They have no concept, no remorse for anyone. They just, they want their money. And I just, I feel it's wrong. I do. It's just not right.
We'll definitely be looking into this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry to interrupt. Councilman McMillan is your councilperson, but I think I might, I, I think I have some information on where to steer you. So this is gonna be a short meeting. Can you stick around and speak with the two of us afterwards? Thank you. We'll, we'll talk after the meeting.
Yeah, we can't have a back and forth, unfortunately.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it.
Would anyone else like to speak before the City Council? The second time, would anyone like to speak before the City Council? For the third and final time, would anyone like to speak before the City Council? Public session is now closed at, sir, it's a one-time speaker. Yeah, if you could just speak with the council. Seven thirteen. We are back. We will now convene the ten twenty-seven twenty-five, regularly scheduled council meeting at seven thirteen. I'm looking for a motion to approve the Journal of ten fourteen twenty-five.
Motion.
Motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And any abstentions? And once the council clerk's ready, we will have her hand out the communication for this evening.
We have one communication this evening, Mr. Chairman, and it is Communication A from the Tax Collector regarding overpayment of refunds for October twenty twenty-five, which will be filed with tonight's minutes. And that concludes our communications.
Thank you. We will now recess for the committee meetings at seven fourteen. First up, we have Finance Committee Chairwoman Akbarali.
Thank you, Chairman. The time is seven ten, and your Committee on Finance is now in session. Members present are Councilman Vargo, Councilman Lox, Councilwoman Tucker, Councilman Johnstone, and myself, Councilwoman Akbarali as Chair. First up, we have our finance updates.
All right. Good evening, Chairwoman Akbarali. Good evening, council members. Everyone should have received the September twenty twenty-four monthly financial report, so I will just briefly touch on where we are through the month of September. Through the month of September, we continue to monitor revenues and expenses in our three main funds of the General Fund, Sewer Fund, and Allentown Fire Department Fund. Looking at the General Fund, through September, we collected thirty-six point five-two percent of our overall revenue budget through the first quarter. That collection rate primarily consists of our taxes. We are currently assessing, as I mentioned at previous meetings, we're currently assessing our, how the quarterly tax payments are working out. When you do look at the report, again, we are slightly behind when you look year over year, but again, that's because we switched to quarterly. As I mentioned, we will have more information probably in the November meeting because with the two collection, with the collection changing to quarterly, we really have to assess the trend in October, when the second quarter was due, because that's when we look at delinquencies, second half payments, things like that from individuals that took advantage of that. A majority of our tax collections are mortgage payments. And I will admit, most of our mortgage payers did pay a second half basis because unless we make this a permanent fix, they don't change the way they pay. So that's why this is sort of a hard time to compare how quarterly payments are working out. We have to look at it from the residential standpoint without a, without a mortgage and those who have a mortgage. Because again, the mortgage companies, some of them didn't pay quarterly, they still paid half, some switched to quarterly for one time. So it's kind of a mixed bag on the taxes. So we'll really have a gauge probably in November, when our Tax Collector does the reconciliation, as far as a half-to-half comparison, because that will be technically the second out of four payments that are due for taxes. On the local revenue front, we continue to talk to our Building Inspector. Again, we really gauge building permits primarily during the second half of the year. When the fiscal year begins, that's really when the construction season is like at midpoint, and that's when projects are kind of at that midpoint stage. And then, when we get into the colder months like we are now, you know, permit pulling and construction projects slow down during those colder months. And they really ramp up probably around the March timeframe, but we continue to work with the Building Inspector Lloyd to make sure that we're meeting budget or to see if there are any projects that may not come to fruition that we thought would come to fruition this fiscal year, because again, those things happen. Sometimes that's out of the city's control. It could be financing or whatever the project itself with the developer that may not happen. So we monitor that closely because we do understand that permits, or it's around two million dollars of our budget. So that's a big item from our local front. The other primary, one of the other primary sources that we continue to monitor, which is really based on the federal government, is our interest. Again, we have a budget of over two-point-five million dollars in interest that we generate off our cash in the bank. That's also based on interest rates from the banks that we have, Fed, from the federal rate. And, you know, we do have short-term investments. Like other municipalities, most municipalities do utilize what's called STIF, which is a short-term investment fund managed by the state, so we do have cash in there as well. But year over year, we are down based on interest rates and that revenue through the first quarter. So we're gonna continue to monitor, monitor that as well. Our state payments, you know, that's another larger part of our budget. We're not expecting, we haven't received any calls or anything, that none of our state payments aren't coming through, our pilot funds or anything like that. So we generally recognize those in October, November, so we are expecting those payments to come in. So that is an update on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, again, we continue to look at overtime versus vacancies. We do still have vacancies in various departments. So we continue in finance to just meet with departments and kind of monitor their budget. I hired a budget coordinator that I'm very happy to do some of this work and off my plate. So he's getting up to speed, but he's been spending the last two weeks getting familiar with departments. So we continue to monitor overtime versus vacancies on different departmental levels. But as far as the, excuse me, as far as the remaining expenditures on the General Fund side, we're right on task where we were the last few years. We are just looking, one of the things that are out of our control is really like workers' compensation claims, especially older claims, state benefits. Those type of things, we just continue to look at it on a monthly basis because sometimes our benefits are driven by claims and experience and not really a budget number. So we continue to look at that on the General Fund side. And then we'll continue to have conversations with the Board of Education as well. As you know, they do their own monthly financials and report to the Board of Education, but again, they are a part of the city budget. So we continue to just talk to the finance team at the Board of Education as well. On the AFD side, we're looking at revenues and expenses being on par. We haven't seen anything on the AFD side that is of concern as of the first quarter. Again, you know, the Fire District switched over to quarterly, just like the city, because they had to with our, since we collect their funds for them and then just disperse it. So taxes are really what we're looking at on the AFD side to make sure they meet their cash flow needs. And then on sewer, you know, one exciting thing, you know, we hired a superintendent, so we've really been working with her to catch her up on the sewer funds and things like that right now at this moment. We're not seeing anything out of the ordinary with the sewer fund, but as you know, sewer fund is unique because they have capital and other equipment repairs that sometimes unexpectedly break or things like that, that are really emergency-type of fixes. So, but she's been great in catching up on the finances and everything with the sewer as well as the operations. So we continue to work with them, but if we do find anything, we will absolutely report it and talk to the council about anything that comes up that we see. So that's my report for September.
Thank you, Mr. Gormley. That was a very thorough update, so I really appreciate that. Does anyone on the committee have any questions? Councilman Vargo?
Thank you, ma'am chair. Hi, Michael, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thanks. Just hopefully two quick questions. Part of our budget revenue is the, obviously the tax principal, but also tax interest. Breaking it up into quarterly, we're only accruing the interest on one-fourth instead of one-half. How is that? Do you have any thoughts on how that's going to be impacting our, you know, our, our interest number that we were targeting for, for the budget?
Yeah, I think, as I mentioned, we'll know more because, like you said before, like you said, the interest would normally accrue after the first Monday in August. And this time, because of quarterly, we had to really look in, look at October to see what was delinquent and what wasn't. Because now you're switching from just everything due July first to part of it due. So that's part of our assessment, is looking at the delinquencies. Because again, people who wouldn't have paid in August would have been delinquent in August. But now, because we switched quarterly, they may have paid something in August. And now we gotta look at October to make sure they paid in October, because then they would be delinquent at that point in time.
So, so is that how you're comparing it? So you're not, you're not comparing it the total number of tax payments in, in August. You're going to see how many total is in October, because that'll, that'll give you the apples to apples.
Correct. I, I think we're trying to, we're trying to assess it by comparing a half to a half, which this, this half would have been in October, basically. If that makes sense, October through December. And so now what we're looking at is how many accounts are delinquent at that time period. In October, how many accounts became delinquent? Because then we gotta take that number compared to last year, where how many accounts were delinquent in August. But then you also gotta assess the number, because last year the number was higher because it was a half payment compared to a quarterly. So there's a lot of math that's going into comparing this.
And my last question is, the government shutdown, are we projecting and, you know, what's the impact that we're projecting in West Haven? West Haven? I know that in the community, there's a lot of folks that are worried, but for city operations, how are we looking?
So for city operations on the general fund side and things like that, we're looking pretty good, because on our general fund side, we don't have a lot of federal government funds coming into the operating side. What we're continuing to work on is looking at some of our larger grants that engineering has. For example, that may be through like FEMA and may have been approved a year and a half ago, so we're looking at making sure that's still on task, we can draw down from that. Um you know, we're working on our community development administration, you know, they're funded through HUD, uh the CDA program, so you know, we were able to do a drawdown in September for things that we spent, so now we're trying to see how this progresses to see, you know, will we be able to draw down for October? If not, how much do we have to float for CDA until that comes about? So our grant, uh writer Olivia is doing a great job of keeping track as these grants come up. But right now, it's some of our larger engineering grants that we're monitoring.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am chair.
You're very welcome. Anyone else on the committee have any questions? Councilman Lox? Listen.
Thanks, Mike. Um I sent you a bunch of questions um last night. I don't know if you had a chance to look at them. If not, I could just ask away.
I do apologize.
Oh, don't worry about it. Yeah, don't worry about it. So local tax revenue streams, ci- city clerk fees, uh investment income, uh building permit fees, are they meeting or missing forecast?
So um most of our local revenues, like city clerk fees are we're projecting um meeting budget
Okay.
Currently, um again, some of these fluctuate year over year based on the time period. Um the only one, as I just mentioned, was investment income, which is um you know, based on different interest rates and where we have our cash and things like that. That's the only one that we're projecting. We're probably gonna be down this year. How much will depend on interest rates and things like that moving forward. Um building permits, um which is the our other larger revenue, again, we we're talking to Lloyd because we're coming into the slower portion of people pulling permits. So um we talked to him to make sure that he hasn't heard of any like projects that won't be done or um have changed course or whatever the case is. So but most of them, we're we're projecting on forecasts.
Okay. On budget. Suppose those fees do come in lower? I mean, do you guys have measures in place to sort of make that that money up anywhere?
Yeah, I think um we try to compare it to um different, either two two ways. We try to compare it to, are there other revenues that are exceeding budget? Um so for example, in the last few years, some of our tax interest that Councilman Vargo had mentioned, some of our interests over the last few years on delinquent accounts, because people were paying exceeded budget, so anything that was short, that was able to cover. So we're currently looking at those trends. Um as I just mentioned, taxes is a little harder because we're quarterly, but um we're like, you know, we have different revenue items in the budget that could possibly exceed budget um to cover any shortfalls. And then the second part is just expenditures, you know, um if we do start to see these, the city general fund on the revenue side go uh downward, um then you know, we can also look at, is there anywhere on the expenditure side that we can save some funds to kind of offset those um revenues that may not meet budget? So we kind of hit it from that type of angle.
Okay. Are there any departments that are over budget in this quarter?
In this quarter, um not overall over budget, um because I think some departments have seen vacancy savings. In our assessment, we did see we did see some departments where certain line items were over budget, and the new budget coordinator, like I said, um he hit the I I threw him right in, and he started talking to some of those departments. We actually found that one department had a PO out there twice that one should have been canceled, so it was counting and making it look like their line item was over budget. So um we did find some of those examples and you know, the the new guy that uh we hired um hit the ground running and you know, we'll just continue to look at it on a monthly basis.
Uh you may have spoken to it, but how is, how is um, how's the overtime trending?
I think it depends on which department.
Yeah.
Some departments are down. Um I'll give you an example, one of my departments in the assessor's office, when I look year over year, they were down, but last year they had vacancies and we had certain um reports that were due around this time, especially due to revaluation. So last year was a high overtime number for me. This year, they still had overtime. Primarily, they spent a lot of their overtime budget in the beginning of the year, because they had certain reports due, but they they're weaning off of that overtime um to be on budget, so um they're an example of, last year they were high, this year we're looking um at being lower. But then you have just other departments like Public Works who have certain projects and um they still have vacancies that are still outstanding, so their overtime is kind of comparable year over year. So I think it really depends on the department and the operation, but um the mayor and I have been working with departments on overtime to um definitely try to lower that trend and be more efficient. I think, you know, one of the things I spoke about a couple of times is utilizing technology a little bit more on where we can, certain departments like Public Works, that's a little harder where they're out in the field. But for um other city departments, you know, trying to be more efficient uh with the manpower that we do have, but sometimes there are just deadlines where the work has to get done.
You spoke about the uh state revenue inflows, there it, so you don't foresee any risk there?
No, no, a lot of our state reven- a lot of the revenue that comes into municipalities and the state is generated off of like income tax and you know, state bonding, things like that, so unless the state dramatically shifted somehow, we're not projecting a shortfall um in any of our state categories.
It sounds like that twelve percent is, it's a good number and
Yeah.
It's one of the best practices, and it sounds like you're trending in the right direction.
The fund balance, yeah, the fund balance is usually three months of operating is the standard, which is, you know, between twelve and sixteen percent depending on your budget. Our fund balance policy is eight percent, just because you, as you all know, we've been building it up over the last few years, so we didn't want to set a target too high that we couldn't
Sure.
Meet, but I think as we continue to grow the city and um put ourselves on the right financial footing, that we can certainly meet the standard uh benchmark for our fund balance.
Under promise, over deliver. Uh thanks, Mike.
Absolutely.
Thank you, ma'am chair.
You're welcome. Anyone else on the committee have any questions? I'll open it up to the entire council. Anyone on the council? Co- Councilwoman Callahan, you can go first.
Thank you very much. Hi, Michael, how are you?
Good.
I just had a a question on the interest um that you talked about. Are we able to, as the rates go up and down, or hopefully down, renegotiate that interest rate, or is that like something that's stable for the year, and then you get once a year to to kind of look at the different rates, or does it fluctuate?
It fluctuates. Um again, it depends on the bank that we're in.
Okay.
So we don't keep all our cash in one bank. And again, we also utilize the uh Connecticut STIF program, like a lot of other municipalities, that actually generates a a good interest rate, because a lot of municipalities use that fund. The thing you have to be cognizant of when you're doing these short-term investments is you need the cash to be liquid, because remember, we have operating costs, right? So we have to be able to pull cash for payroll, debt, benefits, payments, payables, things like that. So it's that balancing act of trying to utilize the highest interest rates that possible, but also making sure we have enough cash on hand to do what we need to do in the city.
For the projects. And then uh one other thing is, you had talked about the quarterly, which I think is fantastic. I I really have so many people that are so happy for that, because it gives them more flexibility to pay. The people with the mortgages, it's already in the escrow and set in there, but correct me if I'm wrong, I feel like the mortgage, which is a lot of people have, they're still just paying twice a year, because they haven't caught up with the quarterly.
Well
So we we shouldn't be behind with those, because it is still twice
Some, some s- s- a a majority still paid half. So what the mortgage companies say is because when we did the budget, we said this was a temporary measure.
Gotcha.
Mortgage companies aren't going to switch unless we say it's a permanent measure, because they don't want to go through all the hassle of changing people's escrows, recalculating their balances for a once-a-year thing. So yes, we did get some, um we got a majority of our mortgage companies paid half, but when I look at it, there's still a good chunk of tax revenue that's not mortgage-based, that some people took advantage of um quarterly. So um that's what we have to assess.
Right. Okay, thank you. Thanks very much.
You're welcome. Councilman Donovan.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mike, how are you today?
Good, how are you?
Thank you for every time you come here, you give out
Absolutely.
Nice. Uh it's probably still too early, but I know the fire department's agreed with the quarterly, but I know also that their budget is really, really tight when it comes to that. I know we probably don't have the stat- status on that yet, right? Still too early? Find out how they're affected right now.
So one of our assessments um is with the fire districts. We've actually met with the fire districts um with uh West Shore and the center, just to kind of get a prelim- preliminary measure of how their cash flow is going and things like that. Um so we've committed to actually meeting with the fire districts. We're still putting together a um rough timeline, but I think primarily after this quarterly assessment of revenue is done, we'll probably meet with the fire districts again, just to check on their cash flow, make sure they're not gonna be short, make sure switching to quarterly hasn't interrupted things like debt payments and things like that, that they're statutorily required to do, so the two fire districts are part of our um assessment as well.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Thank you, ma'am chair.
You're very welcome. Any other questions from Mr. Gormany? Thank you, Mr. Gormany.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Chairman, the time is now seven thirty-five, and your committee on finance is now closed.
Thank you, Chairwoman.
You're welcome.
That moves us on to legis- Okay, a member has called the caucus. We're gonna um recess for that caucus right now. Time is seven thirty-eight.
All right, we're back from caucus at seven forty-eight. Uh, we are going to move on to the next committee, which is the Legislative Commander- Matters Committee. Chairman Vargo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The time is seven forty-eight. Your committee on legislative matters is now in session. Council members present are Councilman Lox, Councilwoman Tucker, Councilwoman Melton, Councilman Johnstone, and myself, acting as chair. Uh, Mr. Chairman, we have canceled this evening's public hearing on Communication B from the October fourteen twenty-two, twenty-twenty-five agenda from Mayor Durrend-Bor regarding Chapter two oh six uh street and sidewalks and adopting Article eight automated traffic enforcement safety devices. We are trying to get a, a little bit more information on the technical aspects, so we wanted an additional two weeks to be able to do that. So I am going to be requesting a public hearing on November tenth at six fifty-five. And that concludes the matters of legislative matters. Time is seven forty-nine, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We reconvened through the council's hall at also seven forty-nine. Moving on to unfinished business, seeing there is none, um, we will move back to committee reports. Will the clerk please read Communication A over a payment of refunds into the record?
Communication A from the tax collector regarding overpayment of refunds for October twenty-twenty-five, which will be filed with tonight's minutes.
Thank you very much. All right, uh, we had a speaker in finance, so we're just gonna uh move on to legislative matters for the report out.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, as I said, we are requesting a public hearing on November tenth, twenty-twenty-five at six fifty-five P M on Communication B from the October fourteen twenty-twenty-five agenda.
You shall have.
Again?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so I'll do the first read again. Second first read. Summary of an ordinance amending the code of the city of West Haven, Chapter two oh six, streets and sidewalks, adopting Article eight automated traffic enforcement safety devices. Pursuant to the authority granted by the Connecticut General Statute, Section fourteen dash three oh seven C, the proposed ordinance would amend Chapter two oh six of the Code of the City of West Haven to add Article eight automated traffic enforcement safety devices, also known as A T E S Ds. The proposed ordinance would provide for the placement of A T E S Ds in school zones, pedestrian safety zones, and other places designated high-risk zones by the Board of Police Commissioners after public hearings and approved by the Connecticut Department of Transportation. It allows in the amount of fifty dollars for the first offense and seventy-five dollars for subsequent offenses within one year, solely upon individuals detected by such devices in such zones to be, one, traveling above ten miles per hour over the posted speed limit, or, two, failing to stop at a solid red light on a traffic control signal. Allow the city to enter into agreements with vendors for the design, installation, operation, and maintenance of the A T S Ds. Provide for hearings for any individual that has been issued a citation for violation of this ordinance in accordance with the procedures delineated in Connecticut General Statute, Section seven dash one fifty-two C, including appeals to the Superior Court. Provides defenses for the operation of emergency vehicles, inoperative, or uncalibrated devices, violations that are necessary for the operator to comply with an order or direction from a law enforcement officer, violations that are necessary to allow the passage of an authorized emergency vehicle, and violations that take place during a period of time in which the motor vehicle had been reported as being stolen to a law, to a law enforcement unit. And limits the use of information gathered by such devices solely uh to that of evidence of violations of the offenses created by this ordinance. And that's it.
Thank you. Moving on to council liaison reports, does anybody have any council liaison reports tonight? Seeing none, moving on to new business. Does anybody have any new business this evening? Councilwoman Callahan?
Uh, hi, yeah, just some new business that was brought to light um around Forest Road. I think it's sixty or fifty Forest Road. Um, they're having major parking issues uh with the U N H students coming in and living in the area. Um, I've had two people um reach out to me that they've actually had altercations with these students. Um, and these people have lived there for a long time and they're finding it harder and harder and harder to find parking. So we're trying to find a solution. I've reached out to the chief, um, I haven't heard back, but um, the people that I've talked to said that it is a city um thing that we need to address. So we'll have to figure out if it's the police or the city or both. But um, you know, obviously we don't want people to feel uncomfortable when they have to park in front of their own homes. And they're having a harder and harder time finding parking because of the students taking up the parking. So um, we can look at that going forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business? Councilwoman Mackey?
Good evening. I would like to uh refer this to the Fair Rent Investigate uh Department for investigation on sixty-two Treat Street. I would also like to refer to the Health Department for an investigation as to the rodent condition and other health-related conditions at sixty-two Treat Street. Thank you.
These are letters to both departments?
Yes.
Okay, on sixty-two Treat? Thank you. Any other new business for this evening? Councilwoman Garthway?
Chairman, I'd like to add to that, that I have some communications regarding the dumpster at Treat Street. So I will be forwarding that as well to, to everyone here, just so everyone here on the council has that information. I have already spoken to the residents and they will get a copy of it as well.
All right. Any other new business this evening? Councilwoman Tucker?
I was gonna actually add to um Councilman McMillan's statement that I also think that a letter um should go to our Corporation Council to ask them to get involved and investigate this further, this matter further, um, to look deeper into this situation. Um, and see whether or not there's anything that the city can do to assist.
What's that? Now, Councilman Vargo?
Thank you. Um, with the federal government shutdown, um, whether or not it's going to be lifted or not, there is a big concern of SNAP benefits that are going to uh either not be uh divvied out come November first. And we're also hearing that any rollover funds that might be available at the end of October thirty-first will not be usable come November first. So whoever has benefits um at the end of this month, if the government does not reopen, will likely not have benefits. Um, and I am also reading that even if benefits are restored, they're not going to be restored at the same level that they are now. So we have quite a few folks in West Haven that rely on these benefits uh to make ends meet. So I know that a number of nonprofits and religious organizations are working to try to supplement, um, not with meals, but with food, perishable foods, non-perishable foods. So please just be on the lookout that there's probably going to be some uh requests for donations. If you see that, please spread it, talk to your constituents, uh, because we all need to be in this together to try to, to try to help each other out. Thank you.
Fantastic. Any other new business? Councilwoman, let me go to Councilman Donovan.
Councilman.
Councilman Donovan.
Uh, just a uh olive branch. I know it's not my district, but I am available uh and would definitely assist if any way possible with uh with helping out in that issue with Treat Street. Okay, all right. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Any other new business? First time? Councilwoman Garthway?
So something fun, uh, a little Halloween trick-or-treat at Sandy Point. This is um being sponsored by my, my beloved Sandy Point neighborhood association. I'm very excited to do this. It'll be on Halloween from five to seven. You just have to drive through. If you, you want to participate in the Halloween costume contest, you can do so. Just wear your costume and drive through. That's what I got. Thank you.
And that was from five to seven, you said?
Five to seven P M.
Okay, perfect. Any other new business? Councilwoman Tucker?
And I too would like to offer support from the seventh district if there's anything we can do to help and assist.
Thank you.
We do need to protect our seniors.
Thank you. Councilman, Councilwoman Heffernan?
Thank you. I'm not going to volunteer myself, but if you need anything, call Bill Heffernan. Thank you.
Any other new business for this evening? Councilwoman Callahan?
I think it's fair to say we're all on board with helping, so um, you've got a good team behind you. And uh, just something else to go back from liaison, um, I was out, uh, when I was out walking and um, on thirty-four and Forest Road, there was a really bad accident this week, um, that I was there. And I just want to really sincerely ask people, slow down. If you see a yellow light stop, don't test it to see if you can make it because it could cost someone their life. So um, I know everybody's really busy, everybody's rushing to get here, get there, get there. But really, um, when you're there in the moment, it's really um, it's life-changing, obviously. And um, really makes you take a step back and think about um what's happening. So um, just slow down. Um, don't look at your phone. You see a yellow light stop, don't try to test it. And um, just try to be aware of the people around you because I just feel like more and more people are just more so busy and so absorbed in their moment and their time that they don't have time to really stop and think about the repercussions of other things. So just a prayer out for the, for the family and um, just go slow. Thank you.
All good points. Any other new business? Seeing none? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions? Thank you, everyone.